Okay, today is Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. I was gonna say 2020. So I was gonna say 2020 or 2020, so I was trying to decide. I said communications. I call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the robe?
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Feiter?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listener?
Here.
Trustee Prakno?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yeah. Everybody's here tonight. Next, we're gonna have the invocation from Pastor Serna of the Prince of Peace United Methodist Church, our good friend, and after that, we'll do a pledge allegiance. Could everyone please rise? Pastor, if you would, please.
Let us pray. Father God, we are grateful for this opportunity to be here. And as we ask for your presence upon us, we are humbled by your faithfulness, your love, and your presence in our lives. We give you thanks for this night. I pray, God, that you will bless this gathering and the agenda before these people. God, be blessed by you. We thank you for the work of our mayor, the trustees, and all those who are working really hard to keep our town safe and a peaceful place to live. As you are present with us tonight, God, be with those who are struggling and grant us peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Flags to my right, if the scouts would please go ahead and lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, please be seated. Pastor, thank you again very much. Everything going good at the church?
Yes.
Tree looks very nice over the holidays.
It must be.
Look good, and Cowboy Jack helps with that, so.
Thank you, yes.
Everything going good at the church?
Very good, very. We're doing really well, celebrating 60th anniversary.
Is everyone having a 60th anniversary this year? Because I know you are. Krista's Victor. Brittany Rosie. It's like everyone started about the same time. I'm still, but it's my 60th anniversary too. I turned 60 on Sunday, so we're all 60 together. So that's for you. Thank you, and we appreciate everything you do for the village.
Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. Okay, we now move on to approval of the minutes of January 28th, 2020.
I move that we approve the minutes of January 28th, 2020, and dispense with the meeting. No reading.
We have a second. We have a motion by Trustee Zarnik, a second by Trustee Listener. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show unanimous approval. Move on now to the mayor and board of trustees report. A few items tonight. On February 1st, we had our once four times a year coffee of the board out there in the council chamber, or outside the council chamber there. I'd say that was probably one of, if not the, one of our biggest crowds.
Yeah.
We had our none. There's a great turnout, and we're excited about that. Little information to the board and to the public. Remember, we've been talking about our drainage program, our road projects, drainage both front yards, sidewalk here and all that. Staff is putting together a preliminary program, preliminary issue on that, and the goal would be probably in, probably more toward April than March, that we'll be making a formal presentation to the board and the whole community, and we're looking at doing the encompassing program. But the good news is, it looks like to get the drainage issue, both front and backyard, and the roadway work into the level we want to be at, can be accomplished by 2025. About five years, right, Kobe, we were talking about? It could really make a great leap for us. So we have good roads, we know that. We do have that, but we're getting there, so it'll tie in perfectly with our 2025 plan that we've been working on. This can work. So it's coming along. Again, we're hoping to have something by early mid-winter. This is a lot more encompassing, especially the presentation they're gonna be putting together is very encompassing, so that should be coming to the public and everyone else by, again, by, we're hoping no later than middle of March or April. Could be as early as end of March, but I'm thinking more like middle of April. So will be coming. A lot of decisions need to be made by this board, how we want to address it, how we're gonna fund it and take care of all the issues. But it can be done. The good news is, it can be done. Am I right, Kobe?
Yes, sir.
We can get it done. So that was exciting, because it's a, it's a big undertaking we're looking to do. So that's going forward on that. Couple things going. Like I say, the nice thing about all this is, this is a good time to have this project coming to the village. As I said before, this village has never been doing better. We're in great shape, doing wealth financing and all the rest, so this is the time to address the issue. And just to give you an example, I was looking at the SNI we got the other day. Construction value of work being done in this community, which a lot of it's obviously industrial property or that, is up 21% so far this fiscal year to $171 million. This is before Microsoft comes into town. That's unbelievable. Fees are up 15% to 2.4 million. Permits are up 73 additional permits, so up to over 2,400 permits issued this year for work being done in Elk Grove. So I know Jared's here tonight. You guys are busy. I know things are happening. You guys are doing a great job, so keep up the good work, and we appreciate that. It's unfortunate, this is becoming like almost a board meeting, announcements every time, but we want to make sure the public understands what's going on. I know we've received, I know the village has been receiving, I'm sure a lot of the board members have been receiving, phone calls from folks. You know, in Elk Grove, when you knock on doors going door to door, normally you have to have a village permit that you wear to identify yourself, so when someone comes to the door, they know that you can be there. We need to explain to people, because people are maybe getting confused. If people are knocking on your door for religious purposes or for political reasons, they do not need to have a village ID on them. So if someone does not have one, and they're doing one of those two items, they do not have their village ID on them. And I know lately, there's been a lot of people from outside our community knocking on doors. I know this past weekend, I got a call from someone on Armstrong. A gentleman was coming from St. Charles, knocking on his door, talking politics. He was there, you know, talking about politics, you know, and we gave everyone a heads up. It happened during last April's election. It happened over the Fourth of July, when people were circulating those petitions. They're back again now knocking on doors. Chief Schmidt, you're like this one. I got a call from someone over on Brandywine, someone from Lith. Remember that? Lake of the Hills. Chief Schmidt, when he was Chief Schmidt.
You'll never move that one down.
Kept saying, oh, we got someone coming, you know, for the police department for Lith. And we all just started laughing, Lake of the Hills. So someone's from Lake of the Hills walking over on Brandywine. So again, if people come to your house, you don't know who they are, you don't have to talk to them. Just don't answer your door if they come to the house. You don't want to talk to them, you say, I'm not interested. And now, if they don't leave, then you can ask them, we didn't leave. If they don't leave, then you call the police. But they hopefully will listen and leave. But there's a lot of people from outside this community knocking on doors lately. You know, they're not our friends and neighbors. A lot of these people are paid professionals. They don't have that ID, but you do not need to talk to them if they come that way. The other thing is, people received a mailing, and we talked today to the Cook County, what was that, Lloyd Cook County?
Clerk's office.
Clerk's office for elections. We talked to her and got it. A lot of people were confused, have called the village, sent emails, letters, and stuff. They're receiving in the mail a piece about mail-in ballots, this piece here. And talks about you can get mail-in ballots and all this. This is a political piece, folks. This is not from the Cook County clerk. We actually asked him about that, gave him information on it, and she said, were they responsible?
She said that, that particular piece, she said those kind of mailings are not authorized by the Cook County clerk's office.
So Cook County clerk is not behind this. They are not sending it out. This is done politically, and it looks very familiar to the one that was sent out last April election. Matter of fact, they got the exact same address and box that you mailed back to. So, folks, this is going to private people, and they ask for your information, full name, date of birth, email address, all this. Do not fill these out, folks. This is not going to Cook County clerk for elections. If you want to vote by mail ballot, you can go on our website, and there's a place you click, and it'll put you directly Cook County clerk's office for mail ballots, or you can go on Cook County clerk's office, or you can actually call her. Her phone number is 312-603-0946. That's 312-603-0946. They will get you the official ballot. These kind of stuff, this is all political. God knows what they're gonna do with the information, what they're gonna do in the future with it. Don't give up your information and stuff like this. And as Lloyd said, again, the clerk's office said, and I'll quote again, "What you are describing is not something that has been authorized by their office." So this is not. So be careful. I mean, how ironic it is, exact same printing, same kind of design, same kind of wording, same address, same mailbox. Don't be fooled, folks. You know, we want you to vote. We want your vote to count, we want your information. Go to the clerk, or go on our website, click on, and we'll get you where you need for your mail-in ballot, and get it done right. So thank you for following up with the clerk's office to make sure we don't anybody bamboozle or tricked or anything like that. Take care of that. Also, on February 26th, we will have a town hall meeting here in the village council chambers. I will be hosting it. We ask everyone to bring a pictured ID, because we want our village residents to get the first seating and have the first opportunity to ask questions. Anyone's welcome to come. People that don't live in the village can come, but we're giving preference at this town hall meeting hosted by myself, mayor. We're gonna give our residents first preference for seating and asking questions. So please bring a pictured ID with you. We'll make sure you get your seat location to come. Again, this whole thing is, it's not political. We're not gonna talk about the referendum, voting yes or no. That's not what it's about. This is to address the issues raised by the anonymous mailings, which I'll be talking about another one. These anonymous mailings, the robo-calls, and people have a lot of questions and concerns. This will be a chance to get your answers to what's going on, ask your question that day. It'll be televised on Channel 6, but you have a chance to come. So please, 7 o'clock on the 26th here at the council chambers, bring a pictured ID, so we know you're resident of Elk Grove, you're preferential for seating and asking questions. Anyone's welcome to come, but obviously, the village residents should have first chance on a village issue to be addressed. So that is the 26th of February, and we'll be getting that out on our website, on our sign, all that. So just want to make sure everyone knows to do that. The last thing I want to talk about is, obviously, an issue we'll probably talk about again on the, excuse me, the 26th, is we got another anonymous mailing coming out. Again, throwing some of our residents under the bus, and they're talking about the tech park, the one that Microsoft will be coming to very soon, talking about it. And they're saying that there were some kind of shenanigans going on with people selling their homes over there, and purchasing my house and all the rest. I'm gonna give you a very quick, board, I thank them for their indulgence on this real quickly here, won't be like the last meeting. Just so you know, we start this, the people that put this out contacted the Chicago Sun-Times back in December, told them the exact same stuff they wrote in this letter here. When I was at the Bahamas Bowl for the Makers One Bahamas Bowl, I got a phone call from a reporter from the Sun-Times, and he also reached out to two of the homeowners along the old Stanley Street. And he was asking the same thing and all this stuff. And I said, well, I said, if you check the records, I said, everything's on the up and up what was done here. Matter of fact, everything was completely right. And actually, the Brennan Group, which is the ones that bought these homes, no tax dollars were ever used. Tiff dollars cannot be used in that project over there, it was used strictly for roads, water, sewer, public improvements, not for that. But I give Brennan Group a credit, they actually didn't have to, as a private development, they released all the documents of the closing and all that to the Sun-Times. The reporter called back about a day and a half later and apologized. He said, "Mayor, everything you said was on the up and up. Everything was above board." He said, "There's no story here. Thank you." He actually wrote an apology note to both the homeowners, and said the same thing to them. But what happened here again is, you have the outsiders trying to make it look like there are some games being played. They actually, on the back, they have a quote here supposedly from me. Again, like the last ones, these are out and out lies. I never gave them a quote. I wouldn't know who even talked to on that. But again, they're trying to see. Quickly, what happened was, when the tech park was trying to be developed, the Brennan Group had bought rights to the Bussy Farm. It's during the due diligence period. In order to make this project work and flow right, they needed to get all the property, including those homes along Stanley where the stoplight was, to tie into the whole project. They're somewhat frustrated, trying to reach out to the homes along Stanley to try to work out a deal with them. The homeowners weren't too receptive, they didn't know who these people were, and all that. So in early summer of 2016, they reached out to me and said, "Mayor, do you happen to know some of these people along the street, so we can get this project moving?" Well, I've known most of these people for almost my whole life. These people have lived here from, before the village had almost built. And like I say, one of the owner's wife, who passed away about 15 years ago, Stephanie, worked for me in my insurance business for 22 years till she passed away. I've known her forever. Her daughter Laura, which they mentioned in here, I saw grew up as a kid, she actually babysat my kids at the time. I knew all these people well, so I figured, if anyone can talk to them to sell, yeah, makes sense I did. So I started talking to them the summer of 2016, and there's four homes that were built about the same time, same style, same size, and all that. And then you had that one big custom home. Anyone that drove by there, you couldn't miss that beautiful custom home that was built at the end. That was Laura's home that was built. The problem obviously was, is people get, "Well, you know, Craig, my house has a newer basement than the home next door, so I want more money." Well, no, but my house has better cabinets than yours, so I want... So he was getting the typical thing with homeowners. So what I said was, all of you basically have about the same house. The value of your home is more into the land value than the house value. The house had some value, which we put on it, but the land value for this industrial development, which is now coming Microsoft, is very valuable. So since four of the homes are basically identical, we negotiate the same price for all four, $450,000. Or they have a newer basement, or better cabinets, it didn't matter, we're all going at $450,000. Then the home, the custom home at the end, Laura's home, was only built a few years before that. That place had Amish cabinet, I mean, that, that home truly was unbelievable inside. So of course, they got more value. They got the land value plus the house value, which brought them about $800,000. We cut the deal. Brennan, the private developer, bought from the private homeowners. The only thing I did was, I was negotiating to get them to be able to sell the property so we can get the tech park built. And we did. They cut the contract, or they cut the deal in December, all done, set to go. Well, people have known for a while, I've been looking to downsize my house, all this, but I wasn't doing anything, until May the following year. I was actually at my daughter's graduation at Loyola. My father's had a cell phone, since you know I don't have one, and found a house a block away from where we live, exactly what we wanted for a ranch house, it was a flipper home, gorgeous. So we actually, to my daughter Shagrim, left their graduation dinner quickly to go see the house, show what kind of house was. Four people that night saw it, all four bid on the house. We're actually in a bidding war. So we got it. No intention to sell my house at the time, then something like this would pop up, did it. I put my house on the market in July, had an open house, all that. Well, Mike and Laura, knowing that we have, anyone knows where I lived, I had the biggest lot in Elk Grove, over a half acre, and a newer home, big home, felt that was very similar to the house. They want to stay in Elk Grove, their daughter was just starting Elk Grove High School, it made all sense. That's how it all happened. Again, all private parties, no tax involved, no tax dollars, all privately done. But they want you to make you spin it out like something's wrong. But actually, when I read the piece, I got about $250,000 less than Laura got for her house, and according to this piece, we have the same size, same amount of land, I got ripped off $250,000 to this piece. So I may have to go back to after Laura and have her change of price, Thomas Dickman. I guess I got in trouble. So, but again, these are the same people trying to hurt this community, trying to make us look bad, all for their political purposes. I won't go through that again, I did last time. Again, folks, you know who we are. We've been here. We've served you, we've worked for you. Judge us on our merits. Judge us on this community. Everyone wants to be proud to defend and explain everything we do. You may not always agree, may agree to disagree, but don't believe people that won't put their name, won't put their address, won't put their, behind it, just like the other stuff that's been coming out, you know. It's sad, but again, they threw two great people. Mike and Laura Ball, like I said, and Laura grew up as a kid, from a kid. These are good people. She's a teacher here in Elk Grove Village. Mike's a great woodworker, unbelievable quality he's got and skill. They're thrown on the bus, just like last time we threw Rocco Vinos under the bus. They threw EMG under the bus. They're willing to throw anybody on the bus. That's sick. That's sad. And his father told me when I was talking to him at church the other day, he goes, "Mayor, please remember, there's evil sinful people in this world. We can't solve everyone. Keep the faith, and things will work out." So we'll keep the faith and get things to work out. But again, I apologize to the Ball family for having to go through this. And as I said before, I'll say again, everyone knows up here at the board, yes, we are talking to good lawyers, and things will be resolved in the future. With that said, Mr. Dickman, we got some swear-ins to do and presentations, and we'll go ahead and get started on that right now. So Heidi, you want to join me?
Can I come?
Right down here. I'll go right here. Yeah. While I'm waiting for Heidi to come up, I'm gonna give the board, or the community, a heads up. In the next week or two, you're gonna see another piece come out from the unknown people. If everyone from Elk Grove remembers 10 years ago, my son Junior had the accident, covered by all the press, all the papers, all that, I guarantee that story will be coming out again, so just be prepared for all that good stuff. It won't stop. Anyways, this is a good day. Heidi Graham is with the League, American, I'm sorry, League of Women's Voters. I'm not sure I said it right. She actually has been very involved with the community. She hosted a candidate's forum here last year for the village election, did a great job, and today, they are celebrating their 100th anniversary. So we have a proclamation we'd like to present to the League of Women's Voters, and if you will, go ahead. Whereas on February 14th, 1920, that's a special day, February 14th. Your husband's better remember that.
I have my red shoes on.
Yep, she's prepared for it. The League of Women Voters, League, was formed in the Congress Hotel in Chicago, Illinois, and whereas the League was formed six months prior to the ratification of 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote in the United States. Think about that. 100 years ago, women could not vote in the United States. And whereas the League determined that it would be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any political party or individual candidate, and whereas the League continues today as a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, working to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. And whereas today, the League is comprised of members in over 700 local, county, and state leagues in all 50 states, plus the District Columbia, the Virgin Islands, Hong Kong. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Illinois was incorporated on March 22nd, 1920, with almost 4,000 members. And whereas the League at all levels, among other activities, registered voters, educated voters by holding candidate forums and publishing voter guides, published public policy, research, and hold meetings in key issues. And whereas the League will celebrate its 100th anniversary this coming Saturday, the 14th of February, 2020. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and Board of Trustees in the Village of Elk Grove Village, do hereby proclaim, February 14th, 2020, as a date to celebrate the League of Women Voters and its vision for democracy, where every person has the desire, the right, and the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Day is 11th day of February, 2020. Heidi? I hope I'm not stepping on her toes when I say this. I've been working with them for a couple years now. They do a phenomenal program with high school students, so young guys getting close to 18 years of age. They work with young people to get them registered to vote. That's the area we have the biggest lacking of people getting involved to participate in the electoral process coming up. And now, in Illinois, if you're 17 right now, but will be 18 by the general election?
Correct.
By the general election, you can register and vote in this primary coming up in March, and you're gonna be able to vote in the election come November, which is a presidential election. So I congratulate you.
Thank you.
On working with the young people. And the rest of them, why don't you go ahead and say a few words about?
Thank you so much. We're very honored to celebrate our 100th anniversary. Not many organizations stay as strong as we have over their 100-year history. In fact, today, our league is stronger than ever before. Locally, we have nearly 200 members, many of them students. We do a great effort. In fact, today, we were at Elk Grove High School registering 45 new voters, and we give every student in High School District 214 a gift on their birthday, when they're old enough to vote. And Mayor Johnson has been one of our generous supporters of this particular program, and I am very grateful to the Village of Elk Grove for the support that they have given our nonpartisan organization. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. My bad, you're right. No, no. And remember, it's dark. That's where she gets all these voters, she speaks up. There you go. Enjoy. Okay, next, Chief Michael, if you want to come up. We got a humanitarian award to give. Wait, do I do that first, or you want me to swear in first?
Swear in first.
Okay, we'll do the swear-ins first. So come on up, chief, we got one to swear in. Dan Kautowski, come on up.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you to the board, and Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for keeping us fully staffed with high-quality candidates that you'll see here this evening. We greatly appreciate that. Firefighter, paramedic, Dan Kautowski, was born and raised in Naperville, where he still lives. He's lived there his whole life. He attended Niqua Valley High School, and after that, he enrolled in EMT School. From EMT School, he went on to paramedic school at Edward Hospital, and after successfully completing paramedic school at Edward Hospital, he enrolled himself in the Romeoville Fire Academy, where he went on to become a certified firefighter. After becoming a certified firefighter, he worked for a short time with the North Palis Fire Department, and then also worked with the Warrenville Fire Department on a part-time basis, before taking some time off to care for a relative who needed his assistance. After that period in his life, he was very happy to be called by the Elk Grove Village Fire Department. We're very happy to have him with here, with us here tonight. As he said in his own words, he couldn't be happier than he is this evening to be here with the Elk Grove Village Fire Department. So please, join me in welcoming firefighter, paramedic, Dan Kautowski.
Before I start, what sports did you play when you were younger?
Track, cross-country.
I'll tell you something, I'm serious. This guy's got the strongest handshake I have ever had, and I've shaken thousands and thou... I'm serious, I thought you were a wrestler. Handshake, way to go, do it again. This guy, I'm serious, look, this guy's got a handshake. No kidding, I never, no track guys had hands like that, jeez. Okay, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Daniel Kautowski.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter, paramedic.
Firefighter, paramedic.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
The counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
Duties and office of.
Firefighter, paramedic.
Firefighter, paramedic.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Hello, everyone. I really appreciate you all coming out, especially my friends and family, which are sitting right over there. Thank you very much. And also.
Who you got over there?
I got my aunts, my mom and dad, my sister-in-law, my little niece, who's been making a lot of noise over there, my girlfriend, my girlfriend's mom. And I got my couple of friends over there, who is also in the fire department as well. And that's who showed up. And I want to thank especially Gold Shift, which I am on. Very happy, proud to be on Gold Shift. And they've treated me very well, through a lot of respects, and they have a lot of knowledge. And I look forward to training and working with those guys and everyone else in the fire department. So thank you very much.
What college did you go to?
COD.
College of DuPage, George. Any chance all you know what that team is? Now that you're not cheating anymore, so.
I did at one point. It's like Chappy something. I can't remember.
What?
Chappy something. I don't know. Something like that. Close.
The Chaps?
Something.
Chaparral?
Dan, help me out.
Chaparrals.
See?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's impressive.
Thank you.
I'll give an extra chocolate for you. So, welcome to the department. You know, you joined the best department around, bar none. So you got a lot of people there, so I'm going to give you a lot of chocolates. You got a lot of family back there. Don't worry, we got a lot of them. We're good. There you go, my friend.
I think she perked around a couple of extras for you, so.
Sure. He knows. Yeah, he knows.
He knows how to suck up. He's going to go far. Okay, that's your only?
I need awards.
Well, we'll do the award after we do that swear-in. We'll do that. So we have three new police officers coming up. So Chief, why don't you go ahead with that?
Thank you. So we have three police officers joining us tonight. And for those of you that don't know, we have a fire and police commission. And those are the ones that do the selection process for our fire officers and our police officers. And they're three citizens. They spend a lot of time interviewing all our candidates for both police and fire. And the commissioners, Commissioner Urkey is with us tonight. He doesn't want me to point him out because he didn't dress up, but he's in the back row on the far right, if you can see that. Butch?
Butch, you can wait. You can wait, Butch. We'll get you a chocolate. Don't worry.
So again, our officers, they go to Suburban Law Enforcement Academy. That's in DuPage County, College of DuPage. That's a 14-week program. And then they come to us, and then there's a field training program that also lasts 14 weeks. So they have about 28 weeks where they're learning the job of a police officer, learning the beats, learning the community. And then after that, they're also on a probationary period for 18 months. But I've been assured these three are doing rather well. And so I'm happy tonight to introduce you to our first one. We'll go with Dominic Tally. Dominic went to Western Illinois.
You know that one, Western Illinois?
I do.
What's that?
Oh, you want me to answer it? Leathernecks?
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And what was significant about him as well, he was an Eagle Scout. So we'll have Dominic come up and get sworn in tonight.
Come on up, Dominic. And then I told you guys before, more presence were Eagle Scouts than I think than were not at one point. I'm not sure if it's still the case, but so Eagle Scouts go good. They become policemen, too. Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dominic Tally.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village?
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So today I have my grandparents over here. Residents of Elk Grove, and then my two aunts over there, too. And I would like to thank the mayor for having me out today and all the trustees for letting me serve this fine community. Thank you.
Congratulations. What sport did you play when you were younger?
I played a lot of basketball.
What's that called?
Basketball.
Wrong answer.
What year during the year did they play that? When's that played?
I was almost played all year.
All year?
Yeah.
When's the main season? When's the main part of the season, though?
May.
May?
Yeah, final start.
As long as it's not winter time when the real sport's going on wrestling. Otherwise, you're all. So, here we go. That's why I never heard of it, because during winter time, the real sport.
You're right. We have a fine group of officers coming through now.
So he's got plenty for you, so don't let him say he doesn't. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Our next officer is Jim Johnson. No relation.
How many, wait a minute, how many Johnsons do we have on this department? Is it four?
We, this is four, and the fire department has two, right? So yes, it's going to be like Rosemont. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I was talking to Mayor Stevens one time, and I said that, I said, Brad, I said, you got a lot of Stevens in your department stuff. He goes, it makes it easier, Craig, because we only ask for your first name when you apply for a job. We already know your last name. So go ahead.
All right. So Jim Johnson went to College of DuPage, Elmhurst as well.
Oh, wait, Elmhurst.
And I can't recall that one.
Close enough. Close enough. What?
Blue Jays.
The Blue Jays.
Thank you.
Yep, there you go.
Very good.
Also played hockey, and you can tell them your other sport. So come on down.
Come on down.
Briefly wrestled.
Dad, a boy, see? Johnsons, we stick together. We stick together. I'm sorry, am I making him chief tonight now? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Johnson.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village?
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage?
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States?
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois?
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will faithfully discharge?
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. So I got my family here in the back, my dad Jim, my mom Carrie, girlfriend Natalia, my sister Lexi. They've supported me through everything, so I really appreciate that. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, Board of Trustees, and Chief Walsh for giving me this opportunity. Wanted to be a police officer for as long as I can remember, and I couldn't think of a better community to be serving. So thank you.
Don't worry, sister, he's got plenty for you, too. So congratulations.
It's always nice when they bring the girlfriends out. Little do they know, they turn into wives in a few months, so congratulations.
That's not a bad thing.
No, no.
Not a bad thing.
No, it's not.
Guess the chief job is.
Our last candidate today is Jack Miller, and it is a family affair law enforcement for him. Went to the University of Iowa.
Hawkeye?
Hawkeyes. Very good. And, well, Jack, come on in, and you can tell us a little about the sports you played.
I played football. Football and track?
Football and track? That's it?
That was it. Yeah.
Wait a minute, I thought you setting some up here. No. Because Iowa, Iowa, Iowa's the king of wrestling. I mean, Dan Gable, they had. Now, here's Cole. At least he went to the right school.
There you go.
Had wrestling. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, David Miller.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Having been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village?
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage?
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois?
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I saw the chief's note, and I saw University of Iowa. I saw, oh, my God, this is not coming from heaven or wrestling from Iowa. No, it's close enough. Why don't you do some?
I wish.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board, Chief. It's a great opportunity for me. I've been, wanted to be a police officer my entire life, so I'm very, very lucky to serve a village like Yoko Village. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Oh, yes, yes. My whole family's here, too, obviously. So my grandparents, my mom and dad's side.
Right here in front?
Yeah, yeah, right here. My dad, a police officer in Kenilworth. My mom, my aunts and uncles, my cousins. So I'm very lucky. Thank you very much.
So Kenilworth, huh?
Correct.
Did you make it about chocolates?
Not a chance.
Okay. And we don't have to fight the money Kenilworth has, so that's pretty impressive what we do. So I'm giving you an extra for your dad, a police officer. So we got you covered. We wish you the best of best.
Thanks.
Guys, all of you, good luck. And also, folks, give a hand to all of our guys in the back there. These are guys who make the difference. Before we go, I'd love one of the rookies to bring you guys back some chocolates, too. So let's see if the rookie can do his job. There you go. Guys, thank you very much. Families, if you want to go ahead and get, oh, wait, no, we got one more award. Don't leave quite yet. You guys go sit down, but Dad, we got one more important award before we let you guys go. So Chief Michael, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, I know you mentioned the members of your shift who were here to support you, but they got to run just before you came up. So they all left. They're starting to filter back in now, though. So they do support you. They're happy to be here with you this evening. But his shift is working tonight, so they got to call shortly before he came up. This evening, I'm very happy to talk a little bit about the awards some of our firefighters and lieutenants are going to get here this evening. The State of Illinois is known at a national level for the robust system of fire mutual aid that we have here in this area. And we're happy to tell you that the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, or MABUS as it's known, was actually developed here at the Elk Grove Village Fire Department by a captain named Don Coon back in the 60s and 70s. So the system that we enjoy today actually was created by a member of the Elk Grove Village Fire Department. Today, there's 1,246 fire departments across the state of Illinois, and nearly every one of the fire departments in our state participates in this system. And that's, that's pretty impressive. The 102 counties are all represented in the MABUS system. Actually, the, from Lake Michigan out to the Iowa border, from the Wisconsin border down to Kentucky and everywhere in between is represented by the MABUS system. MABUS includes approximately 38,000 firefighters and fire officers from the state of Illinois, and they represent staffing of 2,700 engine companies or pumpers, 500 ladder trucks, 1,300 ambulances, 250 heavy rescue squads, and 1,000 water tenders, because a good portion of the state doesn't have installed water systems. So water needs to be shuttled into those places with tenders or trucks. MABUS supports 40 hazardous materials teams, 15 underwater rescue recovery teams, 39 technical rescue teams, and a state-sponsored urban search and rescue team. We're very proud to have members on each one of those teams, each one of those specialty areas. We have members of our department representing on those teams. In addition, we have fire investigators, an incident management team, fleet support mechanics, which can be packaged as mobile support teams to provide assistance for large-scale incidents that require more complex and more time-consuming support. So for several weeks in May, June, and July of 2019, MABUS resources were mobilized under the direction of the Illinois Emergency Management Agency. And they were dispatched down to southern Illinois for the extensive flooding that was taking place along the Illinois and the Mississippi River down there. Those communities were hit very hard. And the people who deployed from our department to go down there and support this mission went along with water rescue equipment. And their, their mission while they were down there was to evaluate the conditions of buildings, search for people who may or may not be accounted for, evaluate the conditions of levees, deliver critical supplies to areas that were not accessible by anything but boat. And these folks were able to get down there and help support that mission. In addition, they were able to provide relief for other firefighters in southern Illinois who were personally impacted by this flooding. So they were able to work some of the missions that the other firefighters would have worked so those folks could get out and take care of their, their own homes and their own families. So this evening, we're very happy to talk about the people. We have Lieutenant John Fordon, Lieutenant Todd Richling, and firefighter, paramedic Andy Laird. The mission, let's see here, where was I here? Those who were deployed or provided significant assistance to this mission are being presented with the Humanitarian Service Medal by MABUS of Illinois. So today, Lieutenant Richling, you folks want to come down, please? Lieutenant Richling, firefighter, paramedic Andy Laird, and Lieutenant John Fordon. Now Lieutenant Richling and firefighter, paramedic Andy Laird will receive the Humanitarian Services Medal from Illinois MABUS, and Lieutenant John Fordon has received this award already, so he'll receive an oak leaf cluster to go on the award that he previously received. So as Elk Grove Village Fire Chief, it's truly my pleasure, my honor to present this awards on behalf of Glenn Erickson, who's the chief executive officer of MABUS, and Don Davis, who's the president of MABUS Illinois, and to thank you gentlemen for a job well done. Lieutenant Todd Richling. And Lieutenant John Fordon.
Did someone want to speak a little bit about what went on, who, why don't you want to be the spokesman and kind of talk a little bit about what went on and happened all this? No, I mean, that's a pretty impressive thing, especially with the amount of damage and everything that was going on, so.
Good evening, thank you. First of all, I think our, our, our village board, Mayor Johnson, Village Manager Rumel, fire chief, fire administration, the amount of time and dedication that Elk Grove Village has given to us as, as a fire department, as special teams, is astronomical. We are truly looked at as leaders in, in the country when it comes to that. In nineteen ninety-three, the great flood happened in Illinois, if you remember that far back. Twenty-five years later, ironically, it was about a foot and a half short when a thousand-foot-wide area of the Illinois River levee broke and flooded in excess of ten thousand acres, twenty-five foot deep. It truly cut off the county of Calhoun County, Illinois, which is a remarkable place, one of the most fertile areas in our state, and they, they claim to have the best peaches, ironically, they compete with Georgia. It truly cut them off. For an ambulance ride, it took three and a half hours. The county is completely basic life support, and they just received nine-one-one service last year. So we look at that and the aid that we were able to give to them. We were running ambulance calls by boat, we were assisting them moving food, they had pretty much nothing. I was the second-tier team that came down. There's a, a great quote by General Wes Moreland that says, "I'd rather go down river with seven studs than a hundred knuckleheads," paraphrased, and that is true. I had a team of seven from, from the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System that were outstanding. Prior to us getting there, though, Illinois Task Force One made a massive, massive impact on this organization, on the, on the community, on the people. See, twenty-five years ago when this happened, they didn't want help, so twenty-five years later when we showed up, they didn't ask for it, they didn't really open their arms up necessarily to say, you know, "Here, we're here to help you." There was people like Lieutenant Fordon who sandbagged, saved their firehouse, saved their restaurants, saved their homes. Thanks for sandbagging, by the way, because I didn't have to do much when we got there. It was that effort that made this effort and the effort of MABUS Illinois tremendous. So again, thank you. Thank you to our families, because we were gone for a long time. John and I did two deployments back-to-back almost. So to my wife, to my kids who, who stood up to Andy and John's families, thank you very, very much, and to the board again, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Get you some chocolates, build your energy back up. Get your head out. John's got a big enough thing that I put in there. Here, hang on. Take care of you guys. Give him another hand. And again, like I said before, this is the quality people we have in our community, but more important, this is our community, how we reach out to help people in other areas, and that gives you examples. So we thank you all. If you guys want to go ahead and get going now, now's a good time, go ahead, and we'll get started in just a second. Thank you again.
Uh, it hasn't been called yet. It's going down a little bit, twenty-eight down to twenty-seven. The Buddha, Buddha Jag is coming up a little bit. It's getting a little closer.
Well, hang on a second, I'm sorry, board, we'll give you a chance. Okay, they're about gone. Go ahead, we'll start with the trustees' report. Why don't we start with trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that last night, the Elk Grove Italian Sister Cities met with our student exchange program. Our students are getting ready to travel to Sicily next month for the second part of our tenth, tenth student exchange, and we understand that our counterparts over there are planning a ten-year celebration, so our students are looking very forward to that. And also, I'd like to personally thank the Troop Four-Ninety-Five for showing up here tonight. Troop Forty-Nine was a part of my life for a long time. I was a scout master back a long time ago, and I'm glad to see that the troop is still thriving, and welcome to the board meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt. Trustee Prakno.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that took the time during the last snowstorm to shovel their driveways and their sidewalks. I think it made for a lot more safe traveling, safe walking of pets, safe walking to school. People just out in general, it made for their better safety. They're predicting more snow for the end of this week, so keep in mind that your neighbors might need some help. If you can get out there and shovel your sidewalk and maybe help out an elderly neighbor, I'm sure it would be greatly appreciated and increase the safety. I know I wouldn't want to be out there walking on the streets with the traffic, so I appreciate everything that we do to make ourselves the exceptional community. I'd like to remind everybody that we still have the Winter Farmers Market on the first and third Saturday of the month from eight AM to one PM at the Christus Victor Church right on Arlington Heights Road. And I'd also like to, to make note of something. The farmers' market does a lot of good for our community besides all the things that they sell. They've been collecting money, they've been saving money, and they made, last month, they made a three thousand dollar donation to our food pantry. So that was greatly appreciated in a very necessary time of the year. So thank you to the farmers' market, Connie and Jack Grote and Monica Grote for everything that they do for the farmers' market and our community. And last but not least, I'd like to say happy birthday to trustee Listner, trustee Feichter, and Mayor Johnson.
Thank you.
All celebrating birthdays within the last two weeks.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you again, and I won five dollars, thank you.
You are very welcome. Now you have to buy another one with that.
That's how you don't win. You gotta walk away a winner, not potentially losing.
It's your, it's your winnings, you decide.
Okay. Trustee Listner.
No report.
Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The car, Frank Zarnik and Jim Heffron Scholarship Awards are available. The applications are in. You can get them online at zarnikgolf.com or on the village website. We have eight one thousand dollar scholarships available to Elk Grove residents, so please consider that. It's a great helping hand to your future. I also want to remind you that the Elk Grove Rotary Club is having their fundraising event on Thursday, February twentieth. It's at, it's a reverse raffle. You can win a chance, you can, yeah, you have a chance to win a five thousand dollar grand prize, and there are twenty consolation prizes. Only two hundred tickets will be sold. The ticket cost is one hundred dollars, but it includes dinner and two drink tickets at the Belvedere Banquets. You can contact any Rotary Club member for a ticket, and remember, the Rotary does so much for us and for the village, so it's a way of supporting their work. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Feichter.
No report.
Trustee Jeffrey Charles Flanky.
No report.
Okay, we move on to the county's payable warrant, first, the one for January thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
I move we accept the county's payable warrant for January first, thirty-first, twenty-twenty in the amount of three million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand fifty-four dollars and eight, fifty-eight cents.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Laurie, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feichter.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listner.
Aye.
Trustee Prakno.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. We have a county's payable warrant for February eleventh, twenty-twenty.
I move we accept the county's payable warrant for February eleventh, twenty-twenty in the amount of two million two hundred and thirty-six thousand fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, and second by trustee Frankie, threw me off that one. Without objection, record the votes, few demonstrated, six to nothing. We have considered agenda items tonight, A is an apple through M is a mary. Can I have a motion?
Second.
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listner. Any questions, comments, concerns from any board members or staff on the considered agenda tonight? Anybody in the audience wish to address us on the considered agenda items tonight? Seeing none, hearing none, and without objection, record the votes, few demonstrated, six to nothing. Under the regular agenda, Mr. Rumel.
You have a request on the regular agenda for two essentially temporary real estate signs at the Mailer Crossing Shopping Center to help fill up some vacant space, and if you have any additional questions, Jared Pallone would be available to address those.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
No.
Would you have a, do this roll, regular form?
Yeah, yeah, it was just a motion, it's good.
I need a motion.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Feichter. Okay, Laurie, call the roll, please.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listner.
Aye.
Trustee Prakno.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Trustee Feichter.
Yes.
Motion passes six to nothing. Plan Commission, Mr. Rumel.
We have no items under the Plan Commission nor the Zoning Board of Appeals this evening.
Very good. We have the Youth Committee, trustee Frankie.
Uh, the scholarship applications are out. They're at the high schools and they are on the village website. Please fill them out. There are seven one thousand dollars. I know I was watching you in my hotel last year, last week, or last time, and I'm like, wait a minute, there's more. So seven one thousand dollar scholarships that we're giving out, and you need to have the applications in to us by May fourth, and then we will let the people know after the, uh, Memorial, or, yeah, Memorial Day, right? Holiday, so.
Bless you.
Bless you. Lots of scholarships. So get those forms in, don't wait. Thank you.
Very good. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Listner.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. On January thirtieth, we visited Harper College. Personally, I haven't been out there in several years, and it's amazing what they've done out there. They have a up-to-date manufacturing training center with several fairly new CNC machines along with other equipment and programs. Harper Makerspace, it's an entrepreneur's center, and it's focused on helping bring ideas to life in the market. They have a make shop that supports innovation along with, and expression along with artistic tools, plus a variety of three-D printers. In fact, trustee Zarnik has a, I don't know if they gave those out, but she ended up with one of them.
Well, they gave me.
Oh, that's good, Sam.
Very good, Sam. I ended up with the rose that they had made in the machine shop, yeah, the machine shop, and, and you got the Hawk Battle, uh, bottle opener, so don't tell me otherwise.
Busted.
Uh, thank you, Nancy. On February fourth, we visited Servpro. They're a company that goes out and cleans up after floods and fires and, and they do preventive maintenance type stuff. Very interesting company. In fact, two of the members we spoke with are members of the Elk Grove Rotary Club, and they're very enthused about the upcoming dinner and fundraiser. And also, when the chief was talking, the fire chief, he, he mentioned the reward, uh, awards he was giving out. Servpro has an award called the First Responders Bowl. It's given out by corporate, but you can nominate, and I hope we do, uh, someone from our police, fire, paramedics, and so on, uh, and they, if they win, they, there's something locally, but they also get a trip to a, I think a bowl game out in Dallas. So, uh, they didn't have the latest brochure out yet, so I gave Ray's, Ray Rumel, last year's copy so we can be aware of it. And today, we visited a company called Luxa House. They provide beautiful kitchen cabinets, bathroom vanities, exterior doors, windows. I didn't realize so many windows are made in Europe, and they're great quality. And this, this company, the owner was very knowledgeable, not only of the products, but he's really into computers and websites, and it was a very interesting visit. Nancy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, they also, the, the company is also in connection with a contracting company that he also owns, MG Contractors, and just developing within the village wants to stay very happy with, with his business here, with the location, and very happy with our staff. They were very complimentary to all the inspections and so forth and the help they've given.
Their homegrown success story.
Yes.
Very, yeah. A very lovely building, too. It's a, it's a six-beam mare, and you may want to take a look at this one.
Yeah, you'd be impressed.
And lastly, I was reading in some publication this morning that Microsoft, a company we've been talking about lately, is now the top US company based on market capitalization. They're worth, at least after, as of this morning, I don't know what the market did today, but one point four-three trillion dollars. So, uh, one a nice addition to Elk Grove. And one other visit coming up, we're visiting a company named Tape Case. They make a variety of tapes, adhesive sealants, and that's in March. And that concludes that report. I did want to mention one thing about Enclave. Today, they had their second Makers Wanted Workshop, which I understand that's going over very well, and on Wednesday, February nineteenth, they have another workshop along with a master class that begins at six forty-five. Gentleman named Eric Bowden, who's a serial entrepreneur and part of the Expedia Group. And on Monday, February twenty-fourth, they have their second annual Luminary Leaders Award. I believe you won one last year, didn't you, Mr. Mayor? Very nice award, and that concludes my report.
And it's funny you mention, uh, Microsoft. Go back to the thing, if we didn't get all that land acquired, why Microsoft wouldn't become Elk Grove to speak now and invest in billions of dollars on our property. So it worked out good, and it's great to have them come to Elk Grove.
Maybe they'll put that in one of the upcoming flyers.
I'm waiting for Bill Gates to come to break ground, that's what I'm waiting for.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, Cable Television Committee, trustee Listner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to mention briefly that in our last SNI, I, I wouldn't normally mention this, but there's three stations that the prices are going up. I don't know if anyone's getting these stations. One's called Gay IM TV and Yoga, Fit TV and Yoga. The other one's Gala. Well, they have, the first one, the Gay IM, the price is going from six ninety-nine to seven ninety-nine a month. Gay is going from nine ninety-nine to eleven ninety-nine a month, and Doc Urama is going from two ninety-nine to four ninety-nine. These are all in the health and mind-playing game type field, so just wanted to mention that. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that if you need a break or your adult loved ones need some additional company, there's help. A Caring Place is a respite program available from nine-thirty AM to three PM on Mondays, Wednesdays, or Thursdays at Christus Victor Church. So keep this in mind, if you need something like that or someone you know could use that assistance, and if you have any questions, you can call or drop by and see it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The February Village Newsletter, which is another excellent one coming out this week, you, you should get it this week, depending on the post office, which, but it is available on the village website now, if you want to take a peek at it. It does mention the residential water meters. The first round of postcards, the scheduled appointment were mailed out on February seventh, and they will start taking appointments. They, they expect the, mostly appointments will be scheduled by mid-March, I believe, if I read it right. And lastly, the Neighborhood Watch Program is scheduled to meet March eleventh at six-thirty PM in Room E, which is that way. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feichter.
Big recycling announcement. On June sixth, we're going to have our first big, again, for another year, our big recycling event at the Public Works Facility between nine and noon, and this will be for electronics and document destruction. We always get a massive turnout for that. That's really big. And then, a week later, on June thirteenth, we're going to have the paint and other items recycling event, and between nine and noon at the Public Works Facility again. And with both of these, I will have, especially the second one, more details later about what they will take and what they won't take. So I'm just giving everybody a little heads up about this so you know now. You might want to write that, uh, those dates on your calendar, because it is a big, big deal in Elk Grove. Tons of people use it, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The Hometown Parade is September nineteenth, two PM. The theme is my favorite things, and that gives you a lot of flexibility for your ideas and what you might do express on unit. The Boy Scouts can use scouting, games, sports, theater, music, whatever. Applications are being sent out now. Please participate and send in your response as soon as possible. The Community Character Coalition is the grand marshal of the parade, and we want to acknowledge their work in the village and are fortunate to have this organization working and representing the residents of Elk Grove. Our next parade meeting will be Monday, March second, five-thirty PM, Room E of the Zeddick Municipal Building. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Prakno.
No report.
Capital Affairs Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The Resondential Water Meter Upgrade Program is underway. The first round of postcards were mailed out on Friday, February seventh, to selected routes within the village to begin making appointments with the seamen to have their water meters upgraded. The first appointments will likely be scheduled from early to mid-March, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, there's no airport update this time. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, Mr. Nicomacheus, cold as snow. Who's the last one?
Beach Boys.
Who's the second one?
Uh, Casey and the Sunshine Band.
The first one?
Dodger.
The third one?
Brett Michaels.
And the fifth one?
No, there is no fifth one.
Very good, good job. Congratulations. Good job.
That was kind of tricky.
I know, it was. Just catch and see if you're awake. I give you credit. You're still awake. It's age fifteen, I'm impressed.
Give me five more minutes.
Okay, next special events will be the Memorial Day inside at the Pavilion. Looking forward to that. No items under the Liquor Commission, Mr. Rumel, any messages?
No, no report this evening.
To our village clerk, Laurie.
I just want to remind everybody, early voting will be here at the village hall, March second through March sixteenth. The hours are posted on the website. Also, a reminder, the mayor did mention mail-in ballot applications. Those applications have to be received in the Cook County office by March twelfth in order for a ballot to be mailed to your house. And that concludes my report.
And again, they can go on our website. There's a click that takes you right to the county, or they can contact the county directly, and that is the preferential way even the county says to get your ballot. Don't go through those third parties. God knows what they're going to do with the information.
CookCountyClerk.com.
Pardon?
CookCountyClerk.com.
CookCountyClerk.com.
Quickest way to get your mail-in ballot application in.
Okay, there's no unfinished business on the village attorney. Yeah, there's nothing there, as usual. Um, any new business items for the board?
Um, one item.
Trustee Feichter?
Uh, the, um, the twenty-fifth, which is when we're going to have our next board meeting, during the morning of that day, I will be giving a presentation at the Hatendorf Center to the senior group about recycling, and I think it, I'm hoping that we have good turnout. I think they usually do for this, and I look forward to it. And then I'll be able to tell everybody that evening how it all went.
Now, just, just so you know, trustee Feichter, I do the state village justice there. They say if you draw anything less than twenty-three thousand people, it's a dud. So just as long as you get twenty-three thousand people for your event, Mr. Feichter, it'll be all okay.
Okay. Now, let Sam do the counting. He's good at that.
And they do like chocolates, don't they? They like the chocolate logos. I'm just giving you a heads up. They help you out. Keep that in mind.
Okay.
Okay? Very good. Anything else? To our friends and scouts, you see that one gentleman was an Eagle Scout. How many guys go for Eagle? How many guys going for Eagle Scout? Hey, that's impressive, impressive. Any questions you guys have about tonight's meeting? You guys want some chocolates before you leave? Is that what you're waiting for? I think we're almost out, do we have more, Ms. Murphy?
I think we have some. I'll have to get some for you.
Okay, we're going to get you covered, nothing to worry about, come on down when you get done. Okay, anybody else wish to address the board tonight that's here? Mr. Petzel, how'd the night go?
Actually, I'm for Tuesday.
You glad to see Mr. Knickerbocker?
Yes, sir.
See, I told you someone would be. I mean, I went to China, India, Malaysia, Australia, I still couldn't find, I found someone, see?
Thank you.
Oh, it took me three billion people.
My friend, my friend, Mr. Petzel.
Attorney Petzel.
That's right.
I still see the picture. Good job. Anybody else honestly wish to address us tonight, any questions, comments? If not, Mr. Knickerbocker, not bad.
You're good.
Pretty quick.
For Wendy.
Yeah, for Wendy, good. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Trustee Zarnik, a second by Trustee Feichter. Lori, call the roll please.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
I wonder if anyone will start dancing here any second. Motion adjourned, passes six to nothing. Folks, have a good evening, see you in two weeks' meeting. Adjourned.